Getting there, huh? I think I get back down here where I belong, okay. All right, good morning, everyone. It's a little difference than, uh, today and last week, I would say, to say the least. I'd call to order the, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, Thursday, February twenty-fifth. I'll tell you, let's, uh, let's go ahead and have an implication, if you don't mind, to start with, just play with your mind.
Yes, sir.
I don't mind at all. Let's pray. Lord, you are so good to us. We look back on the history of last week and we acknowledge, Lord, you protected us and brought us safely through. Father, you provided for us and just blessed us abundantly as a community. Thank you so much for the people, Father, from the folks that are on staff, our law enforcement, Lord, our emergency responders, our road guys. Everybody stepped up and did what needed to be done, Lord, and we had folks in the community, Father, just, uh, that volunteered and could step forward to help wherever they could. Our blessing is to be a part of the community like that. Uh, these, these men be your guidance and wisdom today, and we know, Father, that the wisdom and guidance they need to come from you, not from us. And so, Father, we're just leaning on you and relying on you today, Father, thank you again.
All right, have consideration, approval, minutes. January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All papers say aye, all opposed? If you have any old business?
No, sir.
None. Okay, new considerations.
All right, uh, the first item, uh, under new considerations is a rezoning request by Scott May. Uh, Mr. May is proposing to develop a subdivision and, um, property is zoned A one. It's not allowed, uh, in the A one to develop property, so he's, uh, seeking to change from A one to RE one. Uh, it's a fifty-one point oh eight acre parcel on Highway forty-three. It's on the north side of forty-three. That's an aerial view of that property. And this is his preliminary plat. Uh, it shows twenty-nine lots. The minimum lot size is one point five one acres. Uh, Mr. May, uh, will have restrictive covenants that require a minimum heated and cooled area of two thousand square feet for homes in this neighborhood. And, um, he predicts, though, that the homes would probably be around twenty-five hundred square feet. These are views of that property, and Mr. May is here today if you have questions for him.
Renee Daniels not here. I'm close. Can you show me on that map where this is on forty-three?
Um, so...
I know it's got to be before you eat the reservoir, but...
Harbor, isn't this harbor gate doing? This is Lake Harbor. It's right here.
All right, where's the fifty acres or?
This is the forty.
Oh, I see it. Oh, yeah, okay.
And this is twenty-five.
Where's the store, Lake Harbor's store?
Wouldn't it be right in here?
Right in there?
I think, isn't it doing? Yeah.
Was that? Uh, near Roy's property?
It is. I've got some pictures of surrounding properties, let's see. Um, so these are some of the surrounding properties. This is across on the opposite side of the highway.
Um...
And this is Mr. Nichols' place. And that's where he lives.
Roy, hey, we talked Roy.
Nichols.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Firework.
Yeah.
Well, he's got a farm out there where he lives also. Um, Daniels not here, uh...
We're just sitting in public here.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I... I'm just on the other side of twenty-five and where we've been bringing...
He says he'll be here soon.
Where we have been bringing... Developments, agriculture, yeah.
Hey, Steve. Uh, we just got word Daniels be here just a few minutes.
Okay, well, let's just, uh...
Can we skip this one?
Push it down, if you can, we?
Sure.
Oh, we got another one here. Just going around the next one then?
Yeah, yeah.
We're just sitting in public here.
Yeah, it is. It's just sitting in, uh...
All right, so next is a rezoning request by Scott May for Harrell Acres. This is on Harrell Road. Um, again, the property is zoned A one, A two. He's wanting, he'll have to rezone to RE one in order to develop this proposed subdivision. Uh, it's a forty acre parcel. It's on the west side of Harrell Road. That's an aerial view of that property. And this is his preliminary plat. There are nine lots that vary in size. Um, the smallest lot is two acres, and there are four of them that front on, um, Harrell Road. Each of the lots meet the one hundred foot minimum lot width, uh, as required by the RE one zone. And Mr. May is proposing a minimum heated and cooled area of twenty-three hundred square feet.
No, he's not up yet. He's on the site plan.
So this is a view of that property on Harrell. And these are surrounding properties across the road.
On this one, I was not at the pre-construction conference. I, as everybody's heard, due to COVID, uh, so I, I wasn't there to see this. And, uh, I have had a lot of phone calls, people who live, who have bought land across the road. There's a development across the road, Harrell Road, that have a minimum of ten acre lots. And, uh, then there's farm properties on either side, or both of those people. They do not like the small lots, the agriculture, all around it, and it's spraying it out of agriculture.
Okay, I'll do my...
It's made out. They want me to make it ten acres. I'm, I'm not, I can't, I mean, I'm not gonna do that to you. Uh, I would like for you, the way I looked at this, and I looked at this, this morning on Tim's map, those two acre lots, if we can make those one four acre lot apiece, then I would support you. Uh, or, I mean, the minimum that I've let come out of when it's zoned agriculture, and we're moving it into residential, especially out like this, uh, the minimum that I've tried to stay with is three acres. And, uh, it keeps the agriculture field, and that's the reason people want to come out there is it's a quiet agriculture atmosphere plus the school. I'm not, I know the school brings people out there. If we can make those minimum three acre, I mean, the easiest thing would be to put those two together, two acre lots together and have four acre lots. I think you're gonna sell them probably by the acre anyhow, I mean...
We, we can look at, uh, you got a five acre, two...
Right.
Scott, come up here a little.
Hey, Scott, Scott, just come, come up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, and first, I want to, I thank you for, I've only heard good things about...
Well, I appreciate that.
You and your developments, and I thank you for coming out to where we're at and bringing us quality work. Uh, and I'll work with you every way I can.
Yes. I, I will look at, uh, redrawing these three lots here. You have two two acres and a five acre. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't recall right now what the, what the dimensions are across the front. I think all three of those lots are a hundred foot and all, but maybe I can break that up into three three acre strips there instead of, uh, a four and a five. It would actually lay out a little better. Make it a little more pleasing to someone that's buying it. So I can do that. We can make them three acres.
All right, the other thing is work with the water. Make sure you got water.
Yes, sir.
Because we, I don't wanna rezone it and just fall through, and then something else come in there.
I understand. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, let's set that one.
Okay. Motion, motion by Steve sets his public hearing.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All papers say aye, all opposed? Okay. I guess Scott, you'll just hang on a little bit.
Hang on, Daniel.
Hang on a little bit. We're working it over. Just have a seat there. Uh, all right, Renee, you'll go to the next.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Cool Deep Singh at eleven twenty-three Old Fannin Road, Suite B. Uh, this property, uh, is located on the east side of Old Fannin Road. Uh, Mr. Singh is seeking the conditional use permit to open a liquor store in the Exxon Convenience Store. Um, it's in Suite B. That's a view of the existing convenience store on that property. And now, uh, the zoning says that these stores can't be located within five hundred feet of, uh, the property lines of any existing residential use or any residentially zoned property, and, uh, some other uses, uh, are listed as well. The closest thing is, uh, River Chase Subdivision. That's the property line of that residential zone. And we just showed the radius, so you could see that it isn't, uh, within five hundred feet of that. This is a view of the, uh, store there on Old Fannin.
Renee, can I, can I ask you to clarify?
Yeah.
You said within five hundred feet. Did you mean that it's...
It exceeds the five.
If it's not within five hundred feet, it's five hundred and seventy-five feet.
That's right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, before I make sure it was clear.
You mean, we got another area that we can do a liquor store?
Well, that whole area, that area that's resort status, if it's zoned coming, it is.
If it's in that same area? I thought the one place is the only place that, that qualified.
It's not the only place that qualified. It depends on, you know, the measurement.
Well, I meant, I meant as far as the size building and whatever.
Fifteen hundred square feet.
Well, this, uh, space is one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. The rental space is, um... This shows, uh, this is where it will be going on the end, uh, in Suite B.
This, this strip center is the only place that we know of, and the Fred's behind it.
Yeah.
So individual bays within the strip center are probably gonna qualify. The question that obviously needs to be asked at some point is, how many of those can be within a hundred feet of each other and survive?
How close is it to those?
Very close. How close?
Well, I don't think that's really our call to be able to say that. I just don't agree with them to, to...
Well, so this is the X.
Right.
I mean, I, I hate this.
It's probably a football field from this bay to the bay that's in the...
Yeah, the other, uh, let's see, if you can see it from here.
They're gonna have signs up. What price is on the liquor?
Yes, probably. We'll have to, we'll have to tend to that.
So...
Yeah. Yeah.
So this is the other building here. This is where you go into the bowling alley. And that, that other store is gonna be on that low, that end closest.
They'll be able to throw a rock and hit each other.
Yeah, well, I mean, you, as far as discriminating, you can't do that. I mean, it's like having those car washes one across the road and the other, but, like I said, I just think...
The legislature didn't leave us with a lot of options.
I, I resent the fact that they, they did that and dump it off on us like that. So, I'm not, I'm not part of it. Go ahead. Y'all can.
All right, so these are just, uh, surrounding properties there on Old Fannin. This is across the street. This is looking back toward twenty-five.
The way designed is just not fair to the people across the street, if somebody else wanted one somewhere. That's my problem, is they, they made one little hub. That's, that's my issue with it.
I'm not sure if Mr. Singh is here or not today.
No, he's not.
Can I say it?
He's just sitting in public hearing. You want to say it, you say it.
I guess, uh, already wait, put it down there and let Daniel.
How many more we gotta see before he gets here? None?
Well, we have...
That's the last one? Okay. Yeah, he's, I must say he's for him.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Number one and number three, we're hoping for Daniels, is that correct?
Yeah. Yes.
I guess.
Okay, so the next item is a conditional use permit for Brendan Chapman at twelve...
Pete Daniels pulling in now.
Twelve twenty-two Old Fannin Road, Suite B. Mr. Chapman is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a vehicle sales business in Suite B. Um, it's called Dash Auto House. It's a one point five oh acre parcel. It is zone C two. This is his site plan. Um, the application says it's an internet dealership that markets vehicles online as well as on site. His site plan, uh, states that he would park approximately no more than nine cars maximum out here in this existing parking area to the front of the building. There's a gravel area. This is that building. He will be in Suite B on this end. This is a view of the, but rear of the building. There's a circular driveway that comes around.
What's it gonna be again?
Auto sales business. Now, he did say that mostly, um, their, uh, customers would be by appointment only, but if somebody did want to walk in, they would take them. Um, the nine cars would be parked out selling. The remaining inventory would be housed in the warehouse area of this building. They list their hours of operation as Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM, Saturday, nine to two, closed on Sunday. This is a view out on Old Fannin, looking back toward twenty-five.
In your seat too, I see.
Yes, sir. This is across the street. All of these are on the opposite side of Old Fannin. And then this is, this is, adjoins the property, RJ.
I know where you're at, ma'am.
Yep. We spoke to Jay about this. Um, Renee, I'm stepping on you, so I apologize, but I just want to communicate. Jay, Jay's not here, so, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best to try to enunciate the, the sentiment that he expressed earlier in the week when he received information about this request. As C two, it's a conditional use, and so, uh, the reason that it's a conditional use is because we anticipate that auto sales are gonna have outside, right, sales activity, and so that's not allowed in C two. And so you've got to get a conditional use for outside sales activity. And Jay's sentiment is that we're starting to get a little bit auto dealer heavy in this area. Um, it's, it, it's, uh, it's hard to imagine that there is a public need for yet another used auto dealership. So he has misgivings as it relates to that. He did mention to me that, uh, he would be willing to consider this, but one of the conditions would be absolutely no outside display of vehicles. Everything that's gonna happen would need to be inside the building. I hope that that information was communicated to the applicant.
I think they're here.
See here?
Okay, yeah. So i- if that's not something that is within the framework of their proposed business model, if they are, if it is critical to their business model that they have outside display of the vehicles, then we probably have an issue.
I, I agree. I have the same problem now on four seventy-one, and, uh, so however you wanna word it, uh, what, what Jay wishes, I'll make that motion.
Yeah. Well, what, we're, with this just to set the hearing, my suggestion...
Do we want to set it then?
I, I would suggest that because Jay's not here, uh, and hasn't had an opportunity really to share with you guys the, the full spectrum of his concerns, that we simply table this matter, and that at the next planning commission, we will, we will ask the board to consider setting it at that time.
It'll work fine for me if that's what Mr. Slay suggests, but do you?
Yeah, that's, that's what I would propose. Uh, so we would just need a motion to table this item until the next planning commission, where the, uh, the potential setting of a hearing would be considered at that time.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed? All right, now that Mr. Cross is, has made it, uh, I guess we move back up to, um, three, one and three. Pick your pick, Renee.
Okay, so this is, uh, one, Scott May, on the rezoning request to go from A one to RE one to develop a subdivision out on Highway forty-three called Landry Landing. It's a fifty-one point oh eight acre parcel. He's proposing a residential development with twenty-nine lots, as shown on the plat. The minimum lot size is one point five one acres. There will be restrictive covenants that set the minimum heated and cooled area of two thousand square feet. And he's here if you have any questions.
Hey, Scott, one thing I know we talked about, um, hey, thanks for coming. Good to see you. Uh, I know one thing we talked about before was, we were trying to keep everything around twenty-three hundred square feet in that area. I know Steve and I were trying to stay uniformed on that side of it, so most every development that we've had come in, we've tried to stay around there, and what's your thoughts on that?
You know, I, I went two thousand. I project to build most of the homes twenty-five hundred or larger, but, um...
Would you have a problem in putting them at twenty-three hundred?
Um, no, man, we can go twenty-three. You know, because I'm projecting to build them all at twenty-five hundred or larger, but I always like to leave the opportunity for someone that comes in a retiree that says, I don't need twenty-five hundred square feet, that I can build them at two thousand, but we can do twenty-three hundred.
One, one of the reasons I was saying that, we're trying to keep, we feel like maybe the larger homes keeps the property values up a little bit more and, and those type of things to help with the... Everything that's there. So, uh, I know I've talked to Tim about everything on, on everything, and I appreciate you working with the county to get everything straight. Thank you for your efforts on that side of it. Uh, but if we could keep that around the twenty-three hundred spot, I think we're in a good spot on that, so if you're okay with that?
Yes, most certainly.
This lot size makes a lot of sense here.
Yeah.
Because it's transition, and you got the Lake Harbor development that's close, that this, this feels like the right kind of transition for this area.
Yeah.
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 And then as you leave the reservoir or you go farther towards Pisgah, you stop, you step those lot sizes back up.
You see cornfields.
That's right, that's where the ag is. So this, this is fitting right in the kind of the vision, Steve, that you guys, Daniel, have had for this area. Uh, consistent but careful growth patterns that track along with where we are, moving from agricultural to a little more urbanized residential. So this, this fits.
All right.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate you. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, motion sets the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve and Brad. All in favor say aye, all opposed? All right, you got one more, Daniel.
Thanks, bud. Appreciate you. Appreciate it, Scott. Okay.
Three, that's yours.
Yeah, it's not Scott, though, right?
Yeah, two, two is yours. Three, you got one more of them.
What I'm saying is Scott May's done it, right?
Yeah.
All right, number three.
Wait, we, have we set both of those?
Well, number two's District Four.
No, it's actually not.
We're on number three, Cool Deep Singh.
It says it, but it's not a breath.
I was just reading what it said there. All right, so...
I know, I do too.
So talk to me on the Harrell Road deal. Is that me?
We're good.
Oh, you already got, okay, you got that covered. Okay, pardon.
All right, so we're good on everything?
Take me on number three, Mr. Renee. Sorry about that.
Cool, Cool Deep Singh.
If I'm drinking coffee, we're in a good one today, you know? I feel like Slay up here.
Five, ready to go?
Two Slays, I'm in trouble.
No doubt about it. I got a bigger cup than Slay's guy, so...
Cool Deep Singh, conditional use permit, eleven twenty-three Old Fannin Road, Suite B. Uh, Mr. Singh is seeking the, the conditional use permit to open a liquor store in the Exxon Convenience Store. Uh, it's on the east side of Old Fannin. That's an aerial view, uh, of the existing store. Uh, the rental space there, it will be, uh, B, uh, Suite B. It contains one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. This is a point nine six acre parcel that is zone C two, and it is in the, uh, qualified resort area, uh, in the county. So this, um, just again shows the five hundred foot radius and that, uh, the store would not be closer than five hundred feet to a residence. The closest one is in, uh, River Chase. That's where the property is. It's five hundred and seventy-five feet from the store to that property line.
Hey, and would, would you mind just kinda ad libbing us where we get the five hundred feet from? I mean, is it the front doors, the property lines?
That's, that's actually in our zoning ordinance, under, uh, a section of our zoning ordinance that we set aside. We, the board in two thousand and four set aside as a regulation for planning for potentially liquor stores being allowed in Rankin County, right?
Yeah.
So now that the, the legislature has said, if it's qualified resort, it doesn't even have to be a vote. We're just, by fiat, we're saying they can go there. The only regulations we have left for those resort status qualified properties is the elements under our zoning ordinance that apply to liquor stores that just so happen to be state authorized and qualified resort. So it's the last gasp effort that the county still has. That's where it comes from.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is the five hundred foot mark, is it from the front doors, from property lines? Where, where do we get to five hundred?
You didn't know, we wanna know where that's by a hundred.
The measurement side, we've had, and the reason I ask that is that we've had a lot of discussion, um, in my area on where the measurement starts at. Is it the property lines, is it the door, is it, um...
That's been set by policy standard, and it's the same measurement standard that we use for beer and light wine.
Okay.
Which is front door...
Okay.
To property line.
To property line?
Yeah.
Front door to property line is a, okay, that's what I was just...
It's not, it's not the property line where the establishment can, is proposing to go.
It's not both property lines, right?
It's not both property lines. It's the front door to the closest property line. All right?
Gotcha.
And it's not always been that way. That, there have been occasions in the past where measurements have been taken from property line to property line. So it's not been consistent, so we're trying to get it consistent now.
Gotcha. And do we have that in our regulations yet, or, okay, it's just kind of the rule of thumb we've been going by?
That is, well, the ABC has a regulation that applies that is slightly different from ours, but it, but it more clearly enunciates how to take your measurement, the ABC regs. So what we've done is, we've just, your staff has just said, well, if that's good enough for ABC, we'll follow that same pattern. So that's what this is. This is the ABC measuring pattern.
I, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Okay.
All right, motion by Cross, set the public hearing. Second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed?
Okay, so, um, the next, um, set of people were scheduled for the two sixteen, planning a, a public hearing date, uh, which due to the ice storm, uh, they were not be able to, they, they weren't held that day. So do y'all want to review any of those? I'm just starting the process over, and I need to set the hearing date for March the fifteenth.
I don't, this...
It would be Don Flyburn...
No, we've already set the public.
Kelly Foster. We have to set the public hearing because I had to start over because the public hearing date changed, and I had to re-advertise.
Right, so can we? So you gotta reset the public hearing?
Yes, sir. I need y'all to reset the public hearing.
So this is, this is no good here then, what we're looking at?
No, it is good. I want it set for March, yeah, three fifteen.
Yeah, but I mean, we can go and set them though.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Unless you wanna review them again or go through them.
No, I don't need to review them again, no.
How, how many are there, Mr.?
Four, four.
Four of them.
Can I make a motion to reset all four of those?
Sure.
All in one motion, Slay, or are you gonna be doing them individually?
Well, I think the last one, Daniel, is a different hearing date.
It is on the last one.
It is, it's four.
So I would say five, six and seven are together as one motion.
Okay, so can I do that? That'd be my motion. Set those, uh, three.
Motion said five, six and seven, uh, public hearing for five, six and seven, uh, by Mr. Cross, second by Steve. All right, any discussion? Not, all in favor say aye. All right, number eight.
And then I'll make a motion to set that last one. Number...
Eight.
Different date. I guess it's...
Sure, it's true. You're right.
April fifteenth.
We've already reviewed it.
Huh? Yeah, right. I'm just saying, you okay?
Second.
All right, motion set, uh, public hearing for number eight by Mr. Cross, second by Brad. All in favor say aye, all opposed? All right, site plan, architectural view.
All right, we have one site plan, architectural view. It's for Ben Banks on East Business Park Drive. Um, Mr. Banks is proposing construction of seven metal buildings for office and warehouse space. The property is on the north side of Highway eighty and, um, East, East Business Park Drive. Um, it's a six acre parcel that's zoned I two. That's an aerial view. And this is his site plan. Um, it will be seven buildings, but they will contain thirteen units. He's gonna do it in phases. Phase one will be five buildings, and they will all front on East Business Park. The other two that front on Highway eighty will be done in phase two. Uh, the site plan does show, uh, along all of the, uh, front of the buildings that the parking area will be, um, asphalt. He does show some, um, limestone parking in the rear. Um, he is proposing, uh, brick on the front only, and he submitted, uh, two renderings. Uh-oh, I'm having technical difficulty, I guess. All right, so this is, uh, one of the renderings. It shows brick three quarters of the way up with metal at the top. And then he has one with, uh, brick all the way up. Um, I think he wants to get your input on, uh, which you prefer. So he's here today, I believe, uh, if you have questions for him. Tim, uh, Mr. Parker has reviewed the, um, drainage plan and had no comments on it.
Go back to your map that shows the location. I'm trying to...
You know, that's on the corner of East Business Park and eighty. Um, it's on the east side of East, this is East Business Park. It's not really, and, oh...
What's on either side?
Okay, well, you know, Jake Purvis already has storage buildings over here. I, I think this was performance drilling, yeah, mm-hmm, and he's across the street, but he's gonna come down to eighty as well.
I understand. I understand where it's at. And I was thinking, this is sitting on top of where Jakey, but it's across the road.
It's across East Business Park, mm-hmm. So he's here if you have questions for him, uh, and want to weigh in on the brick.
Uh, it's, I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter to me whether you go the first picture or this picture. Uh, I do, because you're in a corner, and I learn from mistakes, uh, whatever you can see from the road, like... and I learned from mistakes, uh, whatever you can see from the road, like you got a side that you may be able to see from eighty, whatever you can see from the road, that side, then I would want it to be brick, just like the front.
Well, let me, let me, I run into one other.
You'll come up, come up please.
Uh, I come up with one other thing, in talking to my builders.
State your name.
Of Ben Banks, um, I know Steve and this must be, uh.
Brad.
Brad Callen.
Yes.
This is Jay Bishop right beside, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, that's not it, I'm just kidding.
Alright, but anyway, most of y'all I think I know, but not all.
Crash law.
That's right.
But anyway.
He's never looked this good, you know.
In the building, uh, I talked to the metal building people and y'all familiar with the, they put a rolled insulation down.
Right.
You know, uh, and, and the brick in the wall, actually, the tin wall holds the insulation up, so you have to brick over the tin, so to speak.
Right.
Which, uh, is costly, because you almost double wall. But when you can do it only three fourths way, they say that they can put the metal down on the other part and you build out the brick, uh, with the, the stud wall, it's, doesn't necessarily go all the way to the top, it goes up to where the brick border is. And you're able to put fiberglass insulation in there on the stud wall, because it's built out in, interior. But the next problem I ran into, if you, these, let's go back to the, this is design, let's go to the brick building, if you would, uh.
Which one?
The, 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 the brick building on the two, the two doors.
Uh, you want your?
Yeah, mine, I know.
The plan, if you would.
Now, the, you had it right there.
You're going too fast.
That, that's planned to be a duplex.
I don't, I don't have anything associated.
Now, not knowing in advance, whether it's gonna be a duplex, a single unit, right here, that could be either a single unit or a duplex.
This is a total.
Oh, that one.
Okay, with a single unit, you only want one door, so it creates a problem because building out the lower part.
You talking about if you do it on the side?
No, he's talking about the front.
Oh, broad doors.
Front brick, front brick.
Okay, I thought it was all the, the brick.
So, I never know whether the, the lease or will want half of it or the whole thing, I've had one guy to contact me and want the whole building. See, in being able to build the buildings out in advance, you don't really know what your needs are gonna be.
Uh-huh.
So therefore that's a little harder to do the, uh, uh, brick in advance too much.
I think what he's saying though, if it shows the road, if it's, if it's showing, since we seen from the road, he just wanted brick, so what, I'm confused on what.
I see. Yeah, I'm, I'm saying, and I agree with it.
Uh, what, so what makes that difficult? I mean, you may have standards, Steve, I didn't.
Well, I, I gotta be, talk with the builders a little more, uh, I, I think I've come up with a way to do it.
Okay.
Brick all the way by putting in some support beams where you can go in there and cut a door.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
Right, right, you just frame it in, you frame, yeah, right.
Where you have a header.
Uh-huh, frame, frame, other words, you not only frame it in, but you gotta have some, uh, steel there to support the brick above the door.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
But I think I found a way to solve it, what I'm saying.
Well, we're just gonna look at this to set it today, you can massage that between now and later and.
Mhm. Yeah.
Right.
Well, this, this part on the front.
Let me interrupt just a second, again, thi- this is actually an architectural review, y'all can make a decision today
Okay.
and direct your staff to approve it by way of administrative review. So I, I think we're at a point where if y'all want to have further discussions, we just need to communicate that to our staff and with Mr. Banks and let him decide exactly what it is he wants, and y'all can set conditions, you can say, you know, if it's gonna be two doors or one door, doesn't matter to us, it's brick all the way to the E overhang. Or y'all can say, we're, we're open to a solution that's three quarter brick and with, uh, metal above.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, his choice, but we just need clear direction to Renee so that she can move forward, because that, there's not gonna be another, unless y'all want another discussion, it's not another discussion.
Okay, no, no, we don't. Hey, that's good.
Mr. Renee, can you go back to some of the businesses right there that are joining, cause I mean, some of those had metal above, some brick, things like that there.
Right, mhm.
Well, right across the road, uh, where, uh, Edmund's place is, he's got both, well, he got the other way, this building's got it all brick.
Right. So, those are the new buildings.
Those are new.
And, and I like the looks of that.
That's Edmund's brother-in-law that put those up right there and you guys asked for full brick face on the front there, that's actually
Yeah.
quarter mile to a half mile into the park and literally you can't, you can't see that from Highway eighty if you're driving at speed.
Yeah.
So y'all consistently had a pattern of if it's facing the public road, it needs to be brick.
I agree, I, I'll, I'll agree to that.
Yes, good, okay, we'll just work with Renee, we're good in full brick or.
No problem. Okay. I, I, I think I feel, figured out a way to work out the brick thing.
You can, you can do a structural frame, there's no problem, to support your bricks, like brick header.
Right.
Yeah, brick.
Well, I was concerned about, as I talked to this prospective, uh, lease or, he wanted the whole unit, he said.
Okay.
If I knew that in advance, I would have no problem, but I may not necessarily know that anything.
I got, I see where you're at, I got that, I see.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, y'all have any more questions?
No, sir, no.
Uh, let me mention one thing, I'm gonna try to make sure that I lease this to people that are not gonna clothe.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm, I'm trying to be selective.
And help us police that down the road.
We'll try.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Would y'all make a motion to either approve or?
Motion.
Thank you.
Motion.
Second.
Approve this, uh, site plan. Uh, Steve, second by Brad, any discussion, not all papers say aye? All opposed, okay? This is properties.
Gentlemen, the first item under the nuisance property considerations is the Sharon Page nuisance property at two twenty-six Tudor Circle. This is a District Four property, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos. Uh, either Ms. Page or someone representing Ms. Page can step forward at this time.
There's no one here.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, so, um, we received a complaint on this property on, uh, the ninth of November twenty twenty, these pictures were taken that day. Uh, the complaint was about vans in the backyard and a tour bus in the driveway and some rubbish. Uh, the certified mail was delivered and, uh, received. I don't think we've had any response. And then these are the new pictures that were taken, uh, yesterday.
This in a neighborhood?
It is, it's actually in Stratford Place, which is off of Tricken Bridge.
What is the, what are those, well, you don't know, I guess, Ben, we hadn't heard from them, but what, what are the vans for?
They're just like, like bus vans, you know, church bus.
Shovel, yeah.
That's what Dwayne thought, is that they were some kinda church vans, they've been there though for a while.
Long time. Is there any way we could get them, wherever you try and get them here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I sure would like to ask them some questions before I just said it, but we don't have really.
They've left you with no option, not showing up or communicating, Steve, so I think your, your only option is just to declare the nuisance and ask the justice court to assist.
Work through it, okay, alright, that's, that's my motion.
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, motion said to declare this, uh, nuisance amongst the gains.
Second.
Second by Daniel, any discussion, all papers say aye? All opposed.
Well, uh, for the record, that public hearing is closed, uh, the next item is the, uh, Robin Munn nuisance property, eight fifteen Highway forty-three South, that's a District Four property. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos, uh, if there's anyone here for, or on behalf of Robin Munn, they can step forward at this time.
Alright, so we received the complaint October twenty-sixth of twenty twenty about an unsafe structure, rubbish and debris and grass. These pictures were taken on October twenty-sixth. The certified mail was delivered, uh, I think Kathy did receive a call from, uh, the son and he said he would clean up and repair the mobile home. These are the new pictures that were taken yesterday, there hasn't been any change, uh, other than it might be a little more dilapidated.
Where on Highway forty-three is this? Has it passed South Charlotte Road?
Tell me, tell me where you're, is this yours?
I can't hear ya.
Is this yours?
That's my sister's trailer.
Where is it, where's it located?
Uh, seven, I mean, hers is eight fifteen Highway forty-three South Pilahatchee, Mississippi.
Close to Pilahatchee, Pilahatchee, sure.
About halfway between Pilahatchee and Crossroads.
I got you, okay. What do y'all plan on doing?
Sir?
What do you plan on doing, uh, about this?
Well, my, she, uh, my sister passed away October twenty-fourth of this year, so her son's living there, if he's ever there.
So who owns it, who owns it now? Who, who owns it?
My sister.
She owns it.
She did, but I guess.
Okay, who owns it now?
I guess her son. Wouldn't he be next of heir or whatever you call it?
Let, let me ask the question, let me ask this question, sir, who owns the real property, who owns the land where that trailer's sitting?
Well, right now, since my father passed away September, uh, Octo- August fifth, I guess it's me.
Okay.
Me and him was, uh.
Right.
Co-signer or whatever you wanna call it.
Okay.
Renee, do we know if this trailer ha- has been assessed as being a part of the real property? Or is it a separate item of personal property?
I, I can't, I don't know the answer to that, um.
I guess it's separate. I mean, the whole family lives there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking a technical question about the assessment of this property.
They're not gonna be able to communicate.
I don't think I have that in the motion.
Twenty acres.
Yeah. So gentlemen, typically, the way it works is the owner of the property is responsible for the condition of the property, okay? Uh, this board has determined, or is in the process of determining whether that trailer, which is on this gentleman apparently's property, is a nuisance in the community. So in my opinion, legal opinion, you have the right person in front of you and you can address your concerns about the condition of the property to this person, even if the person who is living in that trailer is not in front of you right now. Uh, it will be this gentleman's responsibility to deal with the person who's living in the trailer. Or if they, if they don't want to deal with that situation, we can let the justice court judge deal with it instead. That's, that's where we are, so the trailer either needs to be cleaned up and remediated to a point where y'all are satisfied it's no longer a nuisance or the trailer needs to go. That's kinda the option where we are.
Did you understand any of that?
Yes, sir.
You heard that, okay.
Now, when I've got the first letter, I gave it to my nephew, which is my sister's son and he was supposed to took care of cleaning it up, all the weeds and stuff around it, and he says he fixed the wall.
The problem is because it's own, it's your property.
Yes, sir.
Now you're responsible for that, so you need to make him either do it or you're gonna, you're the one that's gonna be in trouble about it.
I know that now. Well, I know that now.
Yeah.
Do that or kick him off, but I need some sort of legal way to be able to do it without being sued or something.
Yeah, you, what, what you need to do is to get someone to assist you with removing that trailer from property that you claim to own now.
Well, I guess if I have to, I have to.
Yes, otherwise, this board has no other option because of the condition of that trailer, this board doesn't have another option, they've got to clean that up. The residents of that area deserve a better, uh, community appearance than this.
I don't know how I can get it out.
You just gonna.
I don't think I can burn it down, could I?
No, sir.
I didn't know about it if you did.
Sir?
I didn't know you'd know it if you burned it.
I didn't think I could.
Uh, but you just had to put axles under it and hook something to it and pull it out.
If you can get it out, I think they had trouble getting it in.
Well, you can get it out. Or either have somebody tear it down.
Uh. How long do I have to do it?
Be up to Steve.
Steve.
That's your call now. We up, yeah.
I mean, before it was, uh, right before winter and it was cold.
Well, he, it, you're not gonna get a truck in there for a couple more months, I mean, it, I would say that.
Oh, you don't know how wet it is right in there?
No, I'm sure it's wet, it's all wet. We're looking at the end of February now, so March, April, golly, I tell you what.
Is there someone who will take it off my hands if I do get it out? I mean, is there a place, like a dumpster, I mean, a dump or something?
I'm sure there'll be somebody that would be willing to take it off your hands, uh, and they may take it off your hands to move it, uh, if you.
We, we don't want it back in Rankin County. Sir? We don't want it in Rankin County, we, we'd like to. I don't blame you.
Let's, let's do this.
You got a spot up there?
Let me, say, give him sixty days to either have it rehabbed or gone.
Yeah.
May first, you need to be back in here and tell us what you've done and show us, May first.
Yeah, sure.
No, he can, he can rehab it.
Is that correct?
He'd have to have scope work showing what they're gonna do and it.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think that.
It's a lot of work.
That's not a good.
I don't think it's gonna happen, but I'm gonna say.
That's not a good option.
I mean, your cheapest option is gonna have somebody come and demo it and haul it off. Who? Have someone to come out and demo it. Oh, demo it, alright. And take it off the property. Anybody you can recommend? I mean, it's the first time for me, for a landowner, it used to be my father's, really? We, we can't recommend a vendor to you. Sir? We cannot recommend anybody to you. Oh, you can't?
Re- Renee can, can assist, give him a list of folks that we've, we've, we've had help from in the past without making a recommendation, she can just identify several that are options to call. Uh, Steve, what I would propose is going to declare the nuisance, but delay the referral up to justice court until after May one.
Okay.
Okay, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah. Alright, we're gonna declare the nuisance and we're gonna hold on to it until May first.
Hold on to it till?
Well, no, 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 no.
No, don't hold it.
We're just not gonna take any action until May first.
Oh.
We're giving you to May first to have it done.
Aye.
And you need to get with them, they may be able to assist you in a list of names of people that can either move it or demo it.
These over here?
Yes, yes, sir.
Aye.
After the meeting, yes, sir.
After the meeting?
Or, or another day, yeah, just get a phone number and call them.
Alright, ooh, I don't like phones.
Well, just go see, they got an office, go see them.
Me either, aye.
Okay, that's my motion, uh.
Second.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Got a motion to declare the nuisance.
Thank you, yes, sir.
A nuisance, uh, let's just leave it a nuisance by Steve, second by Daniel, any more discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
For the record, that hearing is closed.
What?
For the record.
Alright, number three is the Mabel Davis Estate nuisance property consideration at five sixty-three Sand Hill Road. The trifecta of District Four today. We will open that public hearing and I'll ask Renee, when she's ready, hold on just a second for me, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos.
Alright, so, um, we received a complaint in November sixteenth of twenty twenty about inoperable vehicles, rubbish and debris on this property. Uh, we've had a complaint on this property before, um, the mail was unclaimed. But these are the pictures that were taken November the tenth. And then these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Where, where is this kinda on District?
I know, I know where it sits, uh, Lawrence, I mean, Sand Hill Road, it's off of Lawrence Road.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Their date is yesterday.
They, they have moved a good bit, I can tell you.
Sir, if you'll direct your attention to the board, Mr. Renee's not addressing your situation, other than to demonstrate the board. Board will hear from you, state your name and address.
What's your name?
I'm Bobo Porter.
Bobo, hey, address?
Address, five sixty-three Sand Hill Road.
Thank.
They have, uh, there's been a lot of activity and they have cleaned up a good bit. Uh, Bobo, I wanted, let me do another sixty days to just kind of get the rest of that stuff that you hadn't gotten. And, uh, when you get it, call them, tell them we got it, let them take a picture and but I, you've, I mean, they've done a lot since those pictures. I mean, I still see some, but.
Right, every, every vehicle runs except for.
Yep.
They have a car.
I spy a cell car, so.
Yep. This, uh, it's a lot better than it was and these people have been out there a long time, this family, and we're kind of moving around them, not them around us.
Right.
And, uh, anyhow, so, I, I wanna work with them and thank you for what you're doing and I, we're gonna, let's, uh, I don't wanna declare the nuisance. I want to just table it for sixty days. And then, if we need to, we'll revisit. Thank you, thank you.
If we do that, we.
We may have to redo the whole thing, but I, I don't want it to slip through and end it, injustice.
We shouldn't have to redo it because they're frozen here today.
Yeah.
Are you guys on?
Okay.
Alright, so mom's here, so, uh, we've given them notice that we're gonna table it for sixty days, so I think Renee can just communicate by way of courtesy if there is an issue that needs to be brought up, but Steve, what I understand is if they do what they need to do, clean up the rest of it, there won't be any need for further discussion, it'll be over.
Some of those, like, you see, you got three that you're working on.
Three don't run at all, right, like the blue truck right there, I gotta put a motor, you know?
If you can take a tractor or something and pull them to where you don't see them from the road, that would help.
Like move the vehicles behind mama's trailer or something?
But don't just, don't just start, don't pile a whole bunch of them up back.
Somebody, I don't know who it is, we don't usually know when they call in.
Right.
But somebody's complaining.
Oh, we got a good, good bit of haters in the neighborhood, but it's cool.
I mean, if you, if you clean, and if you clean the wood up right there, that would even make it look a lot better.
Okay.
You know, it just, that's, that's sort of something where they won't draw attention to people so bad.
Right.
Okay?
Alright, thank you. Thank you.
Alright, thank, thank you.
Alright.
Anything, I see them.
Steve's motion was to table.
Yep, right, none, okay. Got a motion, Steve, to table this for sixty days, uh, second by Daniel, any discussion? All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
Hey, while, while I, while we're in this thing on nuisance properties, would y'all mind checking one area for me? It's the corner of Mount Elm and twenty-five, that when you turn in off twenty-five to Mount Elm on my side of it, first property to the right, it's like a business right there, I don't know if it's a business or what it is, but it's at the corner of Mount Elm and twenty-five. I've had several calls on it, if we could just maybe go just put some eyes on it and see. On such the west side of twenty-five, Mount Elm and twenty-five.
That's the old concrete plant there?
Uh, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, but I don't know much details about it, but I've had several things.
I'm gonna give me a cup of coffee while we change.
Hey, while we're thinking, talking, the one on, on, uh, Florence surface, off Sykes. Guy, you know, we've been in here since he was cleaning it up. Anything happen?
Tomorrow.
Huh?
Court may be today.
Okay.
Uh, it's either, yeah, I think it's today.
Okay, alright.
Hey, um, Slade, while we're in here, I wanted to ask Ms. Renee one thing. There's several things going around on a piece of property um, that's dealing with, um, conditional uses and things like that. It's on North Shore Parkway, it's gonna fall under PRV's area, and I talked to Ms. Renee about this the other day. Uh, but there's a ton of, of conversations going on about it, I've had numerous phone calls. At the corner of North Shore Parkway and four seventy-one, there's North Shore Elementary School right there. Across the street's Fox Bay subdivision. There, um, on the Fox Bay side of that road, so it's the south side of North Shore Parkway, that's PRV property that does their own zoning, and I'll let Ms. Renee kind of expand a little bit on that, but they're proposing to put a gas station on that corner that could be in the vicinity of that school. Now, the location of it and the exact distances, we hadn't done, but I've had numerous calls, 'cause a lot of people think in the county that we're, uh, trying to approve or move through a gas station on that corner on the zoning side. And I wanted Ms. Renee to explain, just kind of on the record, so everybody can hear it, that PRV's issue is not what the county's issue. The county's not been made aware of a request because it's PRV property, they do their own permitting, their own, I don't wanna call it zoning, but their own regulations on what's able to be built. But, Ms. Renee, do you mind kind of ad libbing on that just for a second, on that piece of property, now that you put candy in your mouth? I waited till you put that piece candy in there.
Yes, and also, you covered a lot of that, but, um, I did look on the county, uh, zoning map just to see how it was shown, because our map mirrors PRVs.
Right.
They have land use, not zoning like we have per se. So it's tied to the lease. Uh, but our map shows it as, uh, P one, which would be a professional office type building. Uh, there is flood zone there, so it will have to, uh, go, you know, close to that corner there on four seventy-one and, uh, what is that, North Shore? So, um.
Renee, do we have a copy of PRV's master plan map, their, their comprehensive plan map?
I do not have a copy of that.
I, I, one thing I just kind of wanted to mention to everybody and the board members, because you're gonna get calls on this, that why aren't we approving a gas station to come in near that school? We're not. It, it's not a county issue, we don't have authority over PRV and we can't regulate what they do or don't do. They had a, PRV had a meeting this week and made some motions and discussions, and it's going throughout the, obviously, the s- the circles of the reservoir community on it. Uh, numerous calls we've had on why we're approving one so close to the school, the, the issue with the service stations in the schools, obviously, the selling the alcohol in the school's own area. So, uh, I've told numerous people, and I wanna be sure y'all hear it, that we're not approving, we hadn't been brought no uh, requests for those type of things, but I wanted Ms. Renee to kind of expand on that, and Slade, make a clean, mild language up too.
The reason this becomes an issue is because all of PRV's property in Rankin County and Madison County and every other county they're in, all of their property is classified as resort status. Every bit of it, okay? That makes what the legislature did last year an important consideration, because presumptively, if it's on PRV property, then it's eligible to have liquor stores on it, right? The zoning that I'm talking about, the, the liquor store zoning that Rankin County adopted doesn't apply if it's on PRV property. Why? Because that is a state agency and they will tell you constantly, they are not subject to county zoning regulations, that's what Renee was talking about. We have a planning map, a zoning map, a comprehensive plan that overlays on top of PRV property that is in Rankin County, but PRV gets to decide ultimately what the land use is on a given piece of property that belongs to PRV. That is state-owned property, that's what you need to think about. It's no different than Whitfield or the correctional facility, it's state-owned property. We don't get to regulate state-owned property. We cooperate, we work together, and I can point to several examples in the past, by the way, where a proposed land use has been objected to by Rankin County citizens that is on PRV property. And the board at the time expressed grave concerns over the proposed land use and said as much to PRV, and PRV listened, and that land use didn't happen. So this board can participate in the process by communicating to PRV what your preferences are.
Well, and, and one, and one of the things on the same side of that, PRV hasn't even reached out to the county.
That's correct.
To say, hey, we're thinking about putting a service station here, we're having that kind of discussion, so we've had no interaction between the two groups of people, so.
That's right.
Um.
To my knowledge, PRV has not decided to use any of our measurements that we require. To my knowledge, they haven't, they haven't placed distance restrictions on liquor stores that are on PRV property. I'm, I don't know of any, now, they may be using ABC's measurements for all I know, but at the moment, I'm not aware of anything, so, for instance, if they, if there is a gas station located on that corner, Daniel?
Yeah.
It may be that it doesn't matter how close it is to the school in terms of what PRV may evaluate.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that they have distance restrictions in the, the way that they regulate liquor stores on PRV property. If that was the county, it would be our five hundred foot rule, and if it was closer than five hundred feet to the property line of the school, it wouldn't happen.
ABC's ain't getting involved with that.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I do not know. Uh, we haven't had an occasion, Jared, no reason for the county to be involved in that.
They gonna wanna sell.
Well, they gonna sell.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I just know we're gonna start getting, I've had a bunch of calls, so Keith, you're gonna get some gems?
Yeah. So I think the message to residents who are concerned about that specific piece of property is, number one, you've got to address your complaint to PRV. That's number one. Number two, Rankin County, if the board decides, Rankin County will join with the residents in opposing it, if that's what the board wants to do, and there's enough of a groundswell of objection to it, the board will voice that concern to PRV and express its concerns to PRV, but we can't control the decision.
Right.
That's gonna be PRV.
We know that it's not within our guideline, I mean, we know it's gonna be closer than five hundred foot and stuff like that, is that correct, am I correct?
I don't know if we know that.
Maybe, we don't really know exactly where it's going yet, we're just hearing it.
Okay.
So, uh, that's what I'm saying, we hadn't even been notified, hey, we wanna put it here, we're told that it's in that Fox Bay vicinity, in that area right there.
Renee told you it's gonna probably have to be close to four seventy-one and close to, to North Shore.
This is that parcel, and the pink is the only area it can really go because of the flood zone.
It's gonna be close?
There's a floodway, uh, there.
Okay.
They're gonna be within three hundred feet, regardless of where they try to put the front door.
Yep.
It's gonna be three, four hundred feet, it's gonna be too close to the school, for us.
I'm opposed.
I, I just want, that's an information-only deal, that's what I mean, that's kind of what.
Thank you, Daniel. And by the way, the, they, their regulations is strictly through their lease, okay? There, literally, there is nowhere that you could go, other than their master plan and, and have any real concept of what would be allowed to be on PRV property. Their master plan will control it. So, it's, um, it, it, it's a lot softer regulatory context in their world. Uh, it's, there's no real hard and fast rules there, it's very hard for us to predict what might be there. The fact that we have an, a, a map that, that they have seen and have attempted to sort of coordinate with us, that's a good thing, we want it to be as coordinated as we can get it, but they are not required to follow our zoning map.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, one more thing, Daniel just opened up a can of worms, some questions here. The, uh, Canouse property, have you talked to, uh?
We, we actually, uh, sent that, if you will, last notice.
Right.
And, uh, we've got it on the calendar, I think we were gonna, because due to the weather, the, the ice last week, I think we have it on the calendar to, uh, just see if anything's changed, if not, then.
It's, it's not changed, uh, nothing's changed as far as after you did initial cleanup, or whatever's cleaned up, it's still.
We haven't heard from him, he hasn't contacted us after receiving the letter, so. And I'm not sure that. Sir?
I've been by there a couple times, yeah.
We were gonna, uh, I asked Kathy to check and see if that certified mail was actually received, I'll check with her on that and, um, I guess get with Craig and see what the next step is.
If he, if he wants to send a letter, something.
So, the Canouse property, you know, we sent the letter.
That's right.
And so, I was telling Jared that we were gonna wait another week due to the weather last week.
Right, right. Okay.
But we were, I was gonna have Kathy check and see if he actually received the mail. I don't know if the certified mail's come back yet or not, so we'll check on that, but after that.
Jared, we let it know that, that if something didn't happen, the county was gonna be left with no option of a van to clean it up ourselves.
And all, all it needs is some, uh, really boots-on-the-ground, physical cleanup, that's what it needs. It doesn't need a lot of equipment, it's not gonna need equipment. You're just gonna have to get out there and do this little backbreaking work and clean it up. And then clean it up to the point where you can keep it clean, because it's gonna grow back up if you don't. But, uh, it's not that bad, but that's what's said, he got right there and didn't finish it.
And we might have.
We put him on notice.
Okay, alright. Alright, well, okay, let's see, that's, okay, uh, next meeting, next meeting will be Thursday, April first, December twenty-one, nine o'clock. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by, uh, Brad, second by myself, all in favor of saying aye? All opposed? Okay. Now, we'll move on into the, uh, board supervisor's meeting this time. Okay. Uh, call this meeting in order this point, this time, uh, I don't see him here, we had a public comment by Carl Franco, is, is he not here?
I think that was a carryover from our prior meeting, uh.
Okay. Well, what I did, I had marked them off on my other one, there they are, no, they aren't. Anyway, okay, uh, so where do we need to start then? No public comment, Miss Sullivan, he doesn't have, we already done his.
We, we'll have, we can handle that, Jared or John, I think these are gonna be carries over from our.
Yeah, I had marked them on them, but I'm not sure.
We can handle that, I'm gonna let Keith.
Well, I'm, I mean, I'll, I'll make, I'm, I'll make a motion for that to accept, uh, those changes for item A under section six.
Motion to, uh, accept these by Daniel, second by
Second.
Brad, any discussion? All in favor of saying aye? All opposed? Alright, Bridgette? Come loaded, didn't you?
I'm requesting approval this morning for copier contracts for extension services, IT department, jail medical, SO copy room, dispatch, and two for youth court with Rico USA.
Yeah, same here.
Motion approved by Daniel, second by
Steve.
Steve, all in favor of saying aye? All opposed? Okay, short and sweet, thank you.
Hey, can I ask you one question while you're here?
Of course.
It's a simple one, um, when we buy our trucks with Mike's group, um, do we, if they're not on state contract, we just require two bids, is that what we do?
Yes, if it's under fifty thousand.
Reservoir Fire's wanting to buy some vehicles that's not on state contract, I would assume that's the same purchasing stuff we do, I told them I'd ask this morning. So there's two quotes on it, I'm gonna get probably them to call you and just be sure they're going through the right process on that, so, thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, Bridgette, I have a question. The extension service, we, we outfit their offices, I didn't know that. I mean, I, I, unless this is something different than I'm thinking of.
This isn't new, um, we've always.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't know.
Done one machine for them, I don't know how it started, but I've always gotten one for them.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, I know, but no.
I'm, I'm happy we can help them, I just didn't know that we helped them.
I think probably because we do sponsor stuff in the community room and stuff, or other than, maybe that's why we're the outreach for Rankin County, but I'm not real sure how it started, but we've always provided one for them.
Good, thank you.
Can I intrude and ask Ms. Bridgette to hold tight to say this is a good opportunity to, uh, for me to get squared up on something that I think is a process issue on how we do our bid. Bid law applies, uh, if it's a, if it's a two-quote situation, logistically, the, I think the best way to handle that is simply let Bridget acquire the quotes on the basis of a standardized specification, right? So if it, if it's all those, if we know what we're wanting, what Bridget needs is the specifications for that. She, she doesn't really need, she may not mind, but I don't think you need help with who to go ask for quotes from. She can get the quotes that she needs, right?
Yeah, and I think, I think, yeah, I think that was their big question, was they just, there's some vehicles that are out there, it's not, there's only few that's on state contract to purchase, and obviously, they go usually automatically and buy them off state contract, right? But the type of vehicle they're needing is not, so they were just wondering what the process is, so what I, I told them, our road departments bought some vehicles, and we bought vehicles that's not on contract before, and you knew the process, I just double-checked in that you can buy them off state contract with bids, but they're probably gonna call you to kind of get how to do that.
Yes, and especially this year due to COVID.
Yeah.
If it's not on the lot, it, it's very, it's taken six to nine months to get a state contract vehicle anyway.
Yeah.
Just from a process, and this is not directed at Daniel or Reservoir Fire or anybody, this is just general. I think we're always gonna be on safe ground if we provide Bridget with the specification of the equipment we're looking for and let her deal with the quote acquisition part of that, that's, that's all I wanted to point out. We, we're, we never go wrong when Bridget is the one actually getting the quotes.
Right.
Does that make sense? So we get the specs, get the specs to her, and she gets the quotes. If we do it that way, I think we, there, there's never an issue that I can see that may be an issue.
I think the way, the way it ought to be, because it's so easy just to change it a little bit.
You have me talking.
Yes, and sometimes, like, if there's something for a building or something, like Ben would go talk to someone and give him the specs and tell him what's going on with the project, and then that vendor would send the first quote directly to me, so therefore, nobody has seen it but me, and then I would solicit the second one.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, Bridgette.
Alright, Mike Harrison, Mike, you got a list of them?
Man's ain't got a haircut, look at him. Just licked him out, you know?
Only man left in Rain County that hadn't had the COVID. See?
No, I hadn't had it.
I hadn't had it.
Road department.
Road department.
Yeah, hold on, farmers not eat up it, I mean, you got a good many, but not all of them, huh?
Yeah, man, we got his haircut, you know?
Got ten percent of it.
Huh?
Got ten percent or more.
Are you working a small crew now?
Uh, I'd like to take A and all the way through G under one motion, they're all AT&T.
Yep.
Uh, that we've, me and Craig's been working on, so.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Alright, motion, uh, Daniel, second by Steve, all favors aye, all opposed.
Alright, thank y'all.
In case somebody don't have one of these agendas, this is where they're running the, uh, cabling. Where our road work is and things like that, where we've asked them to move it and maybe anyhow, it's part of our, most of it's part of our jobs, our construction on our work, I mean, on our roads.
Yeah, sure, and they're just about a hundred percent complete on Andrew Chapel, and Energy's just about complete on clearing and grubbing out there.
Yeah, okay.
When they, um, like, back up on, I'm just curious, you said about ten percent or, or, I mean, have they got COVID, or they been just exposed?
More than, more than ten percent.
Well, I don't know, I just go on what you said.
Bit more than ten percent.
I don't know, well, so we, we able to still keep working, got some still working?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, they kinda, they taking precautions themselves?
Yes, we, we'll talk about that.
Huh?
We'll talk about it a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Alright, thank y'all.
Alright, Tim Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, the first item we have on the agenda is the approval of the preliminary plat for Lawson Lake Estates. That's a District Two subdivision, that's, uh, also Scott May, it's, uh, off of Highway four seventy-one, uh, right across four seventy-one from Scottish Hills.
Y'all sat down, looked at it, you're good.
Yeah, the, 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 uh, one thing I'll say is, he, he's patterning it the same way that Highway forty-three is. He's saying twenty-five hundred to three thousand square foot homes is what he's gonna build. Uh, but he, he did, I think he was gonna set his, uh, criteria at two thousand, similar to what he initially, so I don't know if we wanna.
Yeah, so, so, uh, that's my plan, I'm gonna approve it with the, the agreement from him that you get documentation on at twenty-three hundred again.
Approve a contingent upon that?
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
That's my motion.
Motion approved by Daniel, second.
Second.
By Steve, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Second item, Mr. President, is we're requesting authority to advertise the Andrew Chapel Road Reconstruction Project as a District Four project.
Motion.
Second.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Daniel, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Have we had any, uh, contact with the, um, Water Association, I think?
We've had discussions, but we have had no movement.
And that's the only thing that's holding this right now on the utilities?
There are other utilities that are in process, that's the, the one that's lagging, the furthest behind, I'll say it that way.
Yep. Alright.
Item C, Mr. President, is we're requesting authority to advertise the East Pine Brook Drainage Improvement Project, uh, it's a District Two project.
Yeah, so moved.
That's a bond project, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yep, it's the one, uh, we put the bridge in, first phase was the bridge, second phase is not.
Alright, uh, motion by Daniel, second by.
Second.
Steve. Any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
You got a haircut too, didn't you?
Yeah.
That's it. Hey, hey, I'm, I'm on it today, son, I'm on it.
Alright. Mr. President, item, items one and two would be to set public hearing the same date and time, both for Mr. May on two different developments that, that y'all have already looked at, these are for the purpose of the rezoning requests, that's item A and B.
Yes, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm.
Most of the disputed hearing by.
Yeah, we can put them together, and, uh, both of them, we had discussions about what we expect, and he agreed, so, okay.
Not second.
Motion by Steve, second by Daniel, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Item C is acknowledgement of receipt of invoices from, uh, the AEM is what it's called, ADAPS, electronic monitoring. This is a youth court matter, this is their ankle bracelets at youth court. Uh, under the, the agreement that we have between youth court, the board, and AEM, uh, we are responsible for any damaged a- ankle bracelets, this is the first one that has happened since we've been under agreement with these guys, we are required contractually to reimburse them for any damaged equipment, and this is the first one. I think it was actually lost, what was the amount, two hundred and something dollars, I think it is, it's a small amount, but we are responsible for it, so we need authority to, uh, to authorize payment and to issue the check.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Daniel, second, second by Brad, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Item D is really just cleanup work, um, I'm working with our tax collector and a taxpayer on a situation where tax notices for mobile home tax have been mailed to the wrong address, actually to the wrong city, uh, on the address that's provided, which, uh, explains why the tax notices have never been received for a number of years. We have worked at, constitutionally, we are not authorized or allowed to eliminate somebody's tax obligation. So, we have worked out a situation where we can go ahead and take currently owed taxes and allow a payment, um, repayment obligation stream, uh, through, through our normal collector, a private collector entity. So, that's what you're doing, you're authorizing the tax collector to take current payments and work with our collector to set up payment, uh, a repayment, a stream over time, so it's really just an accommodation for a situation that's not the taxpayer's fault.
It's been going on several years.
Yes, sir. About, about ten years.
Oh, several.
Yes, sir.
Wow.
So, it's, it's a very unfortunate situation.
Motion by Daniel and second by.
Second.
Steve, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
And, and just to help y'all understand, the collection activity on this account has been underway for years, but all communications have been directed to the wrong address.
Weren't they laughing about it?
So, it was like, holy cow, this is the common errors that have been compounded over time, so, th- this needed to, to be worked out.
I don't know about this situation, but I can understand where you're paying taxes on more than one parcel or lo- different location.
Yes.
And you're pay, you just don't realize that this other five acres or one acre or whatever is not in part of this other that you've been paying. And that may be, you know, you think, well, surely they would have known after so many years, but it, sometimes it.
So, this is a situation, Steve, this is unique, the situation where the trailer is actually not a part of the real property, it's separately taxed as personal property.
I got you.
So, we've been consistently paying our land taxes year after year, right on time, every time, didn't know we also owed on trailer for trailer taxes.
They probably thought it was all together, didn't they?
Thought it was all together, thought they had covered everything, didn't have any way to know that they weren't covered. It's actually, the person who lives there is actually a daughter, and so the owner of the property is, is the father. The tax notices would not have even gotten to the right place to begin with, even if we had had the address right, so we've got, we have multiple issues here that are not the taxpayer's fault, it's not our fault, it's, it's simply a, it's a state and Mississippi Department of Revenue problem.
I see, I can see how that's, that was an honest mistake there, yeah.
So, thank y'all for fixing that, uh, and the tax, the taxpayer will be pleased to know that that's been handled.
Okay.
Item E is a ratification of the Declaration of Lo- Local Emergency enacted by the Board Supervisors pursuant to thirty-three fifteen seventeen due to the winter storm event, uh, it, uh, it was made effective twelve noon on February twelve, it continues until close of business today. And so, all you're doing is ratifying the emergency and we'll, we'll allow it to lapse at close of business today.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Daniel, second by Brad, discussion, not all favors aye, all opposed.
Hey, I, I, I know I wanna talk about this, Bishop's not here, but on that same side, um, in regards to compensation of our workers that are out there, we'll bring it up Monday. I'm sure, is Bishop be back by Monday?
Yep.
Bring it, I just wanted to mention that I'm gonna bring it up Monday on, uh, trying to figure out how we're gonna compensate our ELC, our road crews and our, uh, law enforcement officials that are out working during the storm.
Over and beyond sixteen, twenty hours a day.
Correct.
Right, we, we do have one matter, uh, it's, it's related, but it's not exactly what you're talking about, so, uh, Daniel, we, we do have one item in executive that we wanna mention with you guys, so, but it won't, it shouldn't take me just a minute.
Just remind me, Keith, and we'll talk about that Monday, but, kinda like Bishop to be here.
Keith?
The first item under me is to approve myself as the, uh, audit representative with the Office of State Audit, uh, and for the authority for the president to sign.
That's right down your wheelhouse, isn't it?
No, sir.
Alright.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Daniel, second by.
Second.
Brad, any discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Alright, next item also dealing with state audit is, uh, approval of the engagement letter for the fiscal year twenty twenty audit with the Office of State Audit, and authority for the president to sign, and the estimate on the services this year is around seventy-three thousand dollars for the audit.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Daniel, second by.
Please, please notice that last sentence.
I just.
I'm, I'm gonna add, I mean, go ahead.
Thirty-two thousand.
Let Brad second it.
Alright, second by. Second by somebody.
We gotta get into discussion.
Yeah, alright, I'll second it, but, but then I wanna discuss.
Yeah, second by Steve.
I just want the board to be aware.
I, any discussion?
Yes, yes, sir, I don't, I was not aware that we had to pay when they're, they wanna come over here and do an audit.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We pay them by the hour for each individual assigned to the audit.
And you provide them with space, they take up our air conditioning, they hang out in our offices, they take ten months to get an audit complete?
So, so my question is, if we vote this down, what happens?
We gotta pay them, but why is it?
They'll take it out of us somehow, somewhere.
Why do we have a thirty-two thousand, two, I mean, it was thirty-two and then it's seventy-three?
Thirty-two was the private firm that audited us up until the state came in and did the eighteen, nineteen, and now the twenty, and that's.
So, private firm was a little less, like, more than half, well, half less, fifty percent.
They were forty-five percent of the cost for an audit to be conducted by the State Auditor's Office. It, it was important for y'all to understand, one, that we get charged.
I didn't know we got charged.
For OSAT to come in here and audit us, we get charged for that, now, they, they do a more thorough audit by state guidelines, it's a more thorough audit, and lord help, it oughta be. And, so there, there is an explanation for some of the increase in the cost, but this is our third year. I don't know why they're here, generally, it's a two-year deal, they're here for a third year, and we're ready for this process to be over.
Boy, I, the general public don't know these type things, it's seventy-three thousand dollars of their money
That's correct.
is paying another government agency that, to come over here and do something they wanna do.
Yes.
I mean, I, I welcome anybody to look at our books or look at anything we do, but darn, welcoming them in and then handing them a check is two different. That may be a little something needs auditing.
Hey, three years in a row.
Yeah, yeah, three, we're close, we're close to the capital.
So, while, while I have the microphone and at the risk of aggravating folks who can make our lives miser- miserable, uh, we've had two really solid, clean audits in a row. Uh, and that's a testimony to this board and its oversight, the staff, the work that they do to make sure we stay on straight and narrow. And the, the effort that goes into making sure we try to do it right, so I, I'm at least grateful in that respect, that, that we can safely say, uh, we're, we're in good shape, we're in really good shape as a county. The, the second thing, though, is that, uh, we hope that unlike last year, the, uh, the, the pace at which the audit is completed is, is quick enough so that we don't get in trouble with our rating agencies
Yeah.
in New York, uh, they have to have our audited financials, and they have to have our final audit before the end of August, we, we have got to have that document, and so I'm hopeful that, uh, that we're on a, we're on a, uh, a pace here to have that work completed, especially if we're gonna pay them seventy-three grand to do it, so I'm, I'm hopeful they will produce the audit that we need before the end of August. Alright.
You wanna vote?
Yeah, Steve's asking some questions.
No, I'm just saying, do you wanna vote?
All favors aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I ain't got much choice, have I?
No, I mean, you go pay either way.
Yeah, maybe worse if you don't.
Yep.
Item C is the, uh, authority to issue the check to Trustmark National Bank in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars, and this is to pay off the pothole patcher that was sold to Simpson County, yes.
So moved.
Wait a minute, that's, that's the amount of money we sold it for, is that?
No, this is to pay off.
Our payoff deal.
What was owed on it.
What did we sell it for?
A hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, yeah.
Good, alright.
So moved.
Second. Motion, I got a motion by Steve, second by Brad. Any discussion, I got some discussion, so, how old was it? How old was that machine?
How old was it?
Yeah. I'm getting that, so we're selling it for a hundred, but we're really, we still gotta pay eighty-seven, so we only making, only got a few extra dollars left. So, I thought when we were talking the other day, we were selling it for a hundred, we were gonna get a hundred thousand dollars, but I didn't realize we still had a payoff of eighty-seven for it. Do they wear out that quick?
They, they start having wear fatigue, but I mean, that's just our buyback system, we could've sold it, we could've sold it inside for eighty-seven.
Well, I'm getting that, we just, so we only made, we really didn't make what, I guess in my head, I, but I told some people about it, and I said, we're selling it for a hundred thousand dollars, you know, they're like, well, great, that's a good deal, but then I didn't realize we still owed eighty-seven on it. So, it wasn't as good a deal as I thought it was, okay, alright, well. Huh, wait, I'm sorry, what?
This is a lease, this is a lease arrangement, so we were approaching the end of the lease term, where we have to make a decision. Do we offer it to the, the entity under the buyback arrangement?
Right.
Or do we find a better deal than what we would get under the buyback, and I think Mike found that Simpson County was willing to pay more than what we would have gotten for the buyback.
Right, it's just when, when we were talking about, I remember the question came up, he said he was gonna sell it, so when the word a hundred came out, naturally, I'm thinking we're getting a hundred thousand dollars for it.
Right.
To apply to the other one.
I got you.
Not.
Yeah, we didn't.
Thirteen thousand, not thirteen, not thirteen thousand.
We have the ability to, uh, to liquidate it, to declare surplus and to push it out, but we still have to pay off
Oh, right.
the underlying lease obligation at the end of the term, so it was a four-year lease term, we were approaching the end of the lease term, we sold it to Simpson, and we made a little jingle off of that.
Oh, I see that now, it's just way, way it came across, that's when it kinda stepped me back, I was like, eighty-seven, I thought we were getting a hundred, but I got it. So, we're getting thirteen, okay, alright, any more discussion, all favors aye, all opposed.
Alright, and then we have the, we're looking to create a new position, um, someone that will work up front and also assist Janice, and we're requesting permission to advertise that position within the Board of Supervisors.
This is a new position?
It's a, it's a.
Filling up, well.
No, it's a new position as far as duties and responsibilities, it'll be a dual position, someone that works up front but also, uh, works for the board as well.
Start out where hand is.
Right, we, we're not up in our, I won't say man-hours, but our personnel, we're gonna replace and just have some additional duties.
Hey, and, and, just so my, my stomach doesn't hurt any longer, Janice is not leaving this position, right? I don't hear no craziness out of you, huh?
Not, not now.
We're not advertising Janice's position on this thing.
One day she will.
That's all, you know, you meant to talk past it, I just wanna hear the no word, cause if this is it, I'm voting against it. We just now got that desk cleaned off, hey, we just got that desk cleaned off, we're fixing to get some, we're fixing to get where we need to be now, you know? Alright, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve, all favors aye, all opposed.
Hey, my thing on the bond project still, hey, I don't, Bishop needs to be here for that, can we do it Monday?
We can.
That's my thought, but I mean, what you think?
Yeah.
Bishop needs to be here for that, sorry.
No, there, there is one item, though, that I, I kinda like to go ahead and get some clarification on, if you don't mind, or do you wanna wait until Monday on that? We'll wait till Monday.
I just wait till Monday.
Moving the bridge Monday.
Just wait, okay.
Wait till Monday.
That's alright.
Alright, uh.
But I do have a couple of additional.
Go ahead, well, okay, go ahead, well, you're gonna do it on additional, but what'd you do while you're, um? Well, you're gonna do it on additional, but which is it where you, um, where we got you, go ahead.
Alright. Well, we can review, is, are there any questions on the March thirty-one agenda, uh, March first agenda?
Yeah, has anybody, everybody reviewed it okay?
Looks like it's gonna be a short one, which means it'll be a long one.
Exactly.
Can we get to that bond project, man?
That shouldn't be long. They're all set.
Shouldn't be.
Okay.
All set where they were. But we'll jump to that, alright?
Additional?
Additional business.
On, on December the third, the board approved additional support to Lake Harbor, uh, Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. However, we, uh, did not get authority to issue the check on that. So if I could get a authority to issue the check.
Just need a motion.
Motion.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, second.
Motion by Steve, second by Daniel. Uh, issue the check. Issue check to Lake Harbor for assistance.
Yes, sir.
Alright, all of these.
And that was to do with the flooding.
Re- remodeling, cause they flooded damage, flood damage.
Yeah, okay, uh, got a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, if we, are we under additional?
Should we do this right here without Jake? Seriously.
Well, we, we don't have to do anything major to it, but I want to be sure. Yeah, I just want to mention a few things about the, the truck route deal. The issue we've got right now is there are X number of no-truck roads in the county outside of Platted subdivision. And, and my issue is that I want to be sure if we have some kind of, uh, policy or regulation on the no-truck routes, that they're all enforced across the county equally. I don't want to just pick certain roads or whatever. It's my interpretation of it, that we don't, I'm not worried about the no-truck routes outside of Platted subdivisions. My full intention of everything on the no-truck routes has been the same as I've said the entire time. I feel like we need platted subdivision no-truck routes. The county rural roads that are out there, would we like to have those people use state aid roads to travel on their trucks? Sure we would. But I don't want to enforce one road and not enforce them all. Either we're gonna do them all or none of them, is what I'm saying. So, and we can wait till Bishop gets here to have that discussion on Monday, but I, I don't want anything, um, I want it all consistent, is all I'm saying. My only desire on the no-truck route stuff is inside platted subdivisions. That we, if we can limit the amount of damage we get inside platted subdivisions, that saves us a tremendous, tremendous, tremendous amount of money. Are we gonna have damage to the county roads on trucks driving them? Sure we are. I get it. And if we want to go down that route, we need to first identify how many roads in the county we want to be no-truck roads. Figure out that, we didn't have actually working list we put our hands on. We think we've got a dozen or so, I don't know how many we really got. But we can't just pick, say, oh, I think we'll take this road right here and make it a no-truck road, and then we'll just make up some kind of enforcement on this road to stop them or move them around. It's not the issue of speeding, it's not the issue of carrying too much weight. If those are issues, there's regulatory forces out there to deal with those issues. I'm talking about travel down these roads. I've got roads, you've got roads, we've all got roads where these dump trucks are traveling on. So either we need to identify which roads we want them not to get on, put some enforcement behind it, give the sheriff additional personnel to manage nothing but just county road police as far as where these dump trucks can drive, and we need to do that. If we're not gonna do that across the county, then I'd like to stay inside these platted subdivisions and regulate the routes we get. Now, is there a situation where we may have to get in there and tear up all the roads in the subdivision to get to a certain spot? Possibly. But if we can keep people on certain roads to get to those lots, we limit the amount of damage to do to the subdivisions because obviously our road budget is bad.
Yep.
So I'll let you, I'll let you kind of fill in where I missed that.
Really, the only reason I'm standing up here is just to make sure that, and I think you guys understand this already, but it's, it really is to help both have this discussion at this level with you guys and also give the public an opportunity to sort of hear what the thinking is behind these discussions, what the policy is behind these discussions. This board, if it's a public road in unincorporated county, this board has authority to regulate, to address matters that affect the conditions of those roads. You have that authority. Under state law, under your constitutional mandate, you have that authority, you can do it, alright? The, the issue is this, and Daniel has put forward a suggestion. If we're gonna have no-truck roads in Rankin County, let's start from the position that we're gonna enforce that inside platted subdivisions first. Why? Well, because those are more densely populated residential in character. Okay? So they are designed to carry residential traffic. And if you make the decision to declare those to be no-truck, that doesn't mean that forever a truck cannot use those roads, that's not what it means. When we say no-truck, what it means is, don't be coming in here unless you've talked to somebody at the county, I just lost some batteries here. Unless you've talked to somebody at the county about coming in here. And that's where Mike gets involved with a route and a permit and a discussion about whether or not there ought to be some protective measures on the roads. It doesn't mean that we can't ever service any of the property in there, it just means that there's a process that we follow and you don't just help yourself and tear the roads up. I give you Palo Verde subdivision as exhibit A, that's on country, that's in countryside, uh, Daniel's district, where we had the dump trucks go in and tear public roads slam up from point A to point B in there, trying to build a, a couple of house pads. And we had to scramble to do something. That's a platted subdivision. If we had had a no-truck policy in place, we would have had a, a, a better opportunity for everybody to understand what the rules are on the front end. And my hope would have been that the, the hauler, the dirt hauler, the builder, somebody would have called Mike and said, I need to get through here to get to that house site, tell me what I need to do.
Yeah, and, and let me give you one point, add into what Slade just said. I've got another example of, we put a million dollars several years ago in Hugh Ward Boulevard. So I've got dump trucks trying to get to one spot of Old Fanning Road on subdivision that come through, go down twenty-five, we'd like for them to go either Spillway Road or go all the way down twenty-five to Old Fanning. They stop at Hugh Ward Boulevard, cut through Hugh Ward Boulevard, and cut through the back of Huntington Lakes, back through Avalon and destroy the roads, and not even going through it. This would have assisted in that situation. So obviously wouldn't want them on Hugh Ward if we can keep them out of it, just because we put so much money into it.
Right.
And, and Steve makes a, I mean, uh, Slade makes a great point on this. The other issue, the bad situation we're putting our sheriff into is he's getting calls that's saying there's a no-truck route. It confuses the entire law enforcement crews to say, is it a no-truck route or not? And what is my enforcement on a no-truck route? Cause they can't look at the statue on it, cause there's not one.
That's correct.
So we, we need clearance and guidance to those guys that are kind of, they're getting their phones lit up. The people out there don't like the dump trucks running up and down it, I understand, but we live in the county, alright? And we want to protect our roads, we want to keep them as safe as possible.
Yes.
But we, we've got to start somewhere on this thing.
Right.
And my suggestion is, and I want to get more into when Bishop gets here, but I wanted to preference that. But what I'd like to say between now and Monday is that any roads that we have in the county should be driven. And i- if they gotta go to a platted subdivision, do it. Talk to our road manager, figure out what you want to do, if they're hauling out of there, whatever. But, um, we've got a mess on our hands.
I agree.
And that's what I'm trying to get cleaned up.
At this point, we're in a, until the board acts, we're still in a no-man's land. There, there is not an enforcement regimen in place at the moment. You lifted your prior ordinance prohibiting trucks in platted subdivisions. That's not in place. And so if the board is of a mind to consider that, we need to do so. And at some point, we need to reach a decision about that and I guess sort of put it to bed, uh, at least for the short term.
Important discussion to have with Jay because, um, he's got some views on it too. I, I want to get, I just wanted to preference what I'm saying and be sure that, I'll leave here basically standing right now, until we get to Monday, that these no-truck roads are just kind of left alone. Let them drive how they need to drive, monitoring what's going on. We've got to continue to talk to people in our area that have the dirt pits and the truck drivers, that if you see stuff tearing up, we need to be notified. But the regulatory authority to shut down these roads right now, I don't believe we've got. And I don't want to do anything hasty, I want to talk Bishop here, I want to have a good discussion on that on Monday.
Right.
And I don't want the sheriff's office in a bad spot, out there trying to figure out whether or not a, a truck, a truck should be on this road or not.
Right. Y'all know this, we got to figure out the enforcement piece because we can announce regulations until we're enforcing it.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's just.
And we don't have that in place.
And we don't.
Then who's going to enforce it?
And I understand, and I agree with you. I think we do have some weight between Mike and say, the guy that owns the dirt pit.
Yeah.
And, you know, and talk to him about, say, we just chipped seal the road. And we, you know, he can talk with the dirt pit guys and say, direct them around this way. This was just, you know, it, it's gonna take several months before it's really in good shape. And most of them are gonna work with us.
Most, most.
Most, most.
Uh, it's, when, when you get the, the road one or two, it, uh, it sets a pattern in place at that point, Steve, and the folks that want to do right say, well, dang, look at them running that road, I'm just gonna run it.
Yep.
So we, we gotta, we gotta figure out the enforcement piece, that's a critical piece to this.
We want to try to push as many of these trucks down state aid roads as possible.
Amen.
So one of the areas we're having concern, and I'll go ahead and mention it now, is the Mount Hail Mary. And I've spoke to numerous of the truck drivers, and I know Steve has too. We'd love for you to come out of there. Now, there's gonna be chant, times you, you have to go north and you can't go that way. But if you can go twenty-five to Holly Bush on state aid road, or twenty-five to Fort City One, do those things. And I've had meetings last week with those guys, a week before the snow. And they've agreed to do as much as they can on state aid roads, but there's certain times that they've got to take another road to get there, and that's just gonna be what it is, you know, and.
It's like logging.
Yeah, somebody's gonna have a choice, I mean, you just gotta do what you gotta do. But if you can stay on state aid roads, I've spoke to the Shannon Armstrong, I've spoke to Kelly Foster, I've talked to all those people. And they understand, if I can get to Holly Bush Road, and they're willing to do it, if I can get there, do it.
Yep.
But if there's routes they can't, we've got to have the ability to let them through those other spots.
Correct.
So.
Yep.
Alright.
And that's where the, that's where the permit haul route becomes a valuable piece of it.
Yep.
Uh, and if, it, it creates work for Mike and his folks that concerns me, honestly. Uh, and, and there has to be an enforcement mechanism, in my opinion.
That's the key.
That piece right there is the solution because eventually the folks in the industry start learning, Rankin County is going to find you if you get out of the path, right? They will learn that and conform their behavior. How do I, why am I saying that like that as if I know what I'm talking about, when obviously I don't? The, the proof is in the pudding. Ever since, and I, I will, Mike will tell me if I'm right or wrong with this. But ever since you guys gave Mike some folks that could do inspections on your fiber installations.
Yep.
We've gotten incredible conformity with our fiber installation regulations. It's amazing. When ju- just when somebody's actually watching. It's amazing. If we have somebody, some guys, some ladies, who's functioned, one of their functions, and it can be dual-function type stuff, but one of their functions is to police, especially the dump truck community.[1679.71]